Madam President, you have a quorum.
Wonderful. Next, we have our voluntary pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to the religion that stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we have, do I hear a motion to approve the September 16th, 2020 city council meeting minutes?
Motion.
So moved to Herschel.
I hear moved Russia. Do I hear a second?
Second, mayor.
Moved by Penny, I mean, Council Ricketts, and second by Herschel is what I heard. Any discussion on these minutes? There are none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do a roll call for this. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Absentions? Okay, so we have a unanimous. All right, so next we have communications from our superintendent and any school committee members. I see Superintendent Harper on the line.
Good evening, Council President, good evening, Councilors, Mayor, and those in attendance. Thank you for making time to hear from the schools this evening. I do want to first state that the governor has released a new budget. The school department and the school committee are in the process of reviewing this. The reduction to our Chapter 70 state aid. And the overall reduction to the, there's a lot of background noise that sounds like somebody's enjoying a lovely bag of chips. I hope that is the case for somebody at home. Sounds like a nice way to start up your meeting with a good bag of chips. So the, the net impact to the Greenfield Public Schools is quite significant from the mayor's budget. With the total reduction totaling over $286,000. And it is under discussion by the school committee. They've asked for a full report since it had just been released literally hours before our last meeting. So there's information coming back to the committee and then some further action and of course, discussion with the city that will be required. I do want to say that we have taken several cost-saving measures, knowing that there are several unknowns in this year's budget. The first being that remote learning, while not inexpensive and you cannot do without the key staff that we have, has some cost savings over in-person services, which is helpful in reductions that are unanticipated like this. And the second is that wherever possible positions that have, could go without filling particularly non-instructional positions, like some in central office or administrative positions, have been kept vacant until we had final numbers from the state to avoid overburdening the taxpayer or putting additional requests forward pending final numbers. So again, this is now back before the school committee for some decision and action. But these large sums and changes are obviously very impactful when we're dealing with so many unknowns. And of course, this effort to bring students back in person, particularly special education students and students that are high needs. We are moving forward with our negotiations. I see the Chair of the School Committee is here as well, so she may want to comment. But the School Committee and myself are moving forward with negotiations with the Greenfield Education Association. And those are moving forward. We're working very hard to take the school committee's plan of Remote Plus, which has many in-person services, and bring that into reality. So working through that process to do so. Right now, we have agreements on in-person services for special education students and others. For example, on the school grounds, outdoors, at children's home, outdoors. For example, like situations that are known to be the lowest risk possible, but ways that we can still deliver in-person services. And we hope to continue extending that in the very, very near future. If there are questions, I'm happy to address them, but I do want to allow time if the Chair wanted to add comments.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. Give me the schools' time to report. I, I think the Superintendent did an excellent job. I wouldn't add anything at this point, and I'd rather give you guys more time to ask questions if you have them.
Thank you. And as you classify, ooh, I'm echoing. As you classify Remote Plus, so that means like a plan to kind of stagger students in the classroom as well as remote, Superintendent Harper?
The Remote Plus Plan is a primarily based on remote services for all students. That was the vote of the school committee. But it adds in-person services in a number of very important areas. The first is for special education and other high-needs learners, including English language learners. In the Phase Two, those students would come back to the building. We're currently in Phase One with approval on Phase 1A through our association and committee. In Phase Three, we bring back additional students and we have supervised remote learning services. And in Phase Four, we have additional in-person services. So what we did in the plan that the committee approved unanimously was start with Remote, but then add in layer after layer of in-person services. And the committee has been eager, I might say anxious, to implement those in-person services as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ricketts has a question.
Okay. Yeah, Superintendent Harper, good evening. I have two questions. My first one is, I want to talk about the tents that I see at the schools. I'm just wondering, the purpose of them, are they getting any use? I believe that there's electricity that's running to them. So I don't know if because of this pandemic, we got them free to help us out? Or, I mean, I know they're really pretty expensive to rent, so I just wondered if you can tell me more about the tents.
Right, so we have local vendor working with us on the tent. They did go through Chapter 30B with it, which is the procurement law around this. So you have to follow process, which we did. They aren't free, as most things are not, but again, working with local vendors, we did go with the best bid price on that, and I can say it's a significant reduction. The city, including GSET, DPW Maintenance and the school maintenance staff did a really, and our tech team, did a really great job bringing Wi-Fi and power to these tents. All I can tell you, Counselor Ricketts, is that our job was to be ready to implement our Remote Plus Plan on day one. And that's where we stand. The tents are available. They are being used for outdoor special education evaluations. So these were, some of them were put on hold in the spring, and they're essential services to our special education students. They were used for our in-person meetings, and we certainly hope that they get a lot more use in the coming days. I don't know about any of you, but if you set foot outside, it was 75 degrees today outside. New England weather is very strange, and some days you feel like it's going to snow, and the next day it feels like summer. Indeed, we've had October snowstorms. Probably many of you remember the October ice storm, snowstorm that we had some years back. So, you know, New England weather is unpredictable, but our goal was to have as many safe and flexible educational areas available to bring students back. And we stand prepared to do that. So we're trying to meet our commitment to the safety of our teachers as well as our students and deliver in-person services. We thought it was a very creative way to do that, and we hope they get full use. I more than, perhaps myself more than anybody else, so I agree with you there.
Yeah, so I have a follow-up to that question, and then I have a totally different question. So right now, do you have a date, like November 1st or December 1st, that they're going to come down? Or you're just gonna keep them up and see? I mean, we were very.
The tents are currently scheduled to be up through Thanksgiving break. Because after Thanksgiving break, we'll, we'll continue to assess it, but they're up for, until Thanksgiving break, certainly. And then depending on whether they'll come down at some point after that.
Okay. And thank you for that. And then my next question was, at the Green River School, is the boiler or the heater that we put in, is that started and getting ready to be installed or?
So my understanding of the progress at Green River, and I have, I'll confess that I'm so focused on the HVAC systems in the schools in use that I haven't gotten an update from George in the last 30 days on this. My fault, not his. But the last projection I heard was for February for Green River School Heating System to be up and running and available to us. I will say that slowdowns in the supply chain and with vendors nationally has affected the timing of this project, as with many projects. No fault of anybody in the city trying to move that forward as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would like to, just to briefly say about athletics. I know that there's a lot of questions because of neighboring districts and athletics. You know, I think you may have seen in local media, there have been some cases in neighboring districts where students have tested positive. One student in particular in a neighboring district tested positive. In those districts, they make decisions that are consistent with the Department of Education, the Department of Public Health, Board of Health decisions. And we do communicate quite regularly between athletic directors and so on. So some districts have paused athletics entirely or quarantined teams. Pioneer is currently taking a pause from in-person services and returning to remote learning on a two-week basis. What I can say is that we certainly understand there's public interest in terms of public health and wanting to keep students safe, and that we are continuing to follow all Department of Public Health, Board of Health guidelines and Department of Education. So if a student, staff member, or community member here in Greenfield comes in contact with any person who's known to be COVID-positive or symptomatic, we are following the protocols. If that person needed to quarantine, they would do so. We are really taking all possible precautions. We do have an obligation to protect private health information. And in communication with our lead nurse Pam Owen, our school physician and Board of Health, they do stress to us that we are not at liberty to share private health information broadly beyond those that are, that need to know because they may have been affected by it. So I just want to say in general that although it's a challenge and it's a natural inclination, and Greenfield right now has no known cases, no suspected cases, that I'm not here, you know, trying to dance around any particular situation in Greenfield, really to do the opposite, to say, we're taking all precautions, we are following protocols and working with public health officials. But when things like this come up, a lot of people, you know, are understandably asking questions, sort of want to know. And just to reassure folks, we're following precautions, we're following protocols, we're working with public health officials. Quarantining anybody that needed to be quarantined is always part of that protocol. So just to put at ease anybody that may have heard and may have wondered, we were taking all possible precautions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none at this time. Thank you very much, Superintendent Harper and Chair Brady.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Now I'd like to welcome the mayor to the microphone. And any city officers or employees that she has invited to speak as well. Welcome.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. A few updates. So early voting is going very well, and I want to take this opportunity to give a shout out to Kathy, Geneva, Tammy, everyone in the Clerk's Office, who is handling it so beautifully. And we did add a couple more voting booths today because of the numbers that we're getting and so that people aren't having to, having to, you know, wait in line for so long. So the, the good news about this is that since the weekend over, that includes today's total, which is, was 99 people. Over 500 people have voted early at the City of Greenfield, and people seem to be handling it well. The city did hire two new people as part-time workers, two really great women, both of them are Spanish-speaking, who have been doing a great job for, only being on the job for a very few days. So between them and the occasional fill-in by Keith and Chief of Staff Danielle and Bill Stathis, everyone seems to be getting the job done in, in Greenfield. And I am very grateful to each and every one of them for that. And we do have police detail there for the hours that the polls are open, and it seems to be going just fine. We also have some good news on the census. We've had very good response in Greenfield. We surpassed 2010, which is extremely important. The number in, I'd like to have seen it a little bit higher, but it is what it is. The number in 2010 was 70, 74.9%. I'm sorry, yes, 2010. And in 2020, it was 75.1%. So as you know, each person who is counted represents a better advantage to us in money that gets returned through various grants and so forth at the city level. It's really important, and I'm very happy to see this response. Little bit of update, I think probably most of you are aware at this point that Valerie has, Valerie Byrd has retired as our Health Director. And we wish her well. I talked to her on her last day, and she's looking forward to retirement with her husband, who will retire very soon as well. Interim Health Director Jennifer Hoffman has taken over and is doing a really fantastic job, particularly given the time that we've had. As you know, Jennifer was our COVID-19 liaison to all of the healthcare providers in our community, among other things. And she has taken well to this new role, so good, good shout out to her as well. And we received a little bit of news that I think ultimately will be positive for the City of Greenfield, although I haven't been able to totally assess it yet. But I think most of you probably are aware that the French King decision has come in from the Supreme Judicial Court, and they ruled in favor of the planning board's special permit that they granted. So I have not heard back yet from the lawyers for the developer about their future plans, but I remain hopeful that I will have a call from him shortly. So I don't have any further updates on what the intentions are for that property out there. We certainly understand that retail, which is the permit that they've gotten, is, is a little bit up in the air. So stay tuned on that. And as soon as I know, something that I feel like is really important for everyone to know on the council, I will, I will definitely let you know that. With regard to the fire station, which is consuming a lot of everybody's time, and a lot of good people are working very hard on that. We, we don't have any major updates on that, except that Ways and Means met last night, and you will be hearing from them at a future date. We continue to work on it. And I, as far as the negotiations for the property that we hope to locate the permanent on, we've gotten most of the information we need to be able to respond. We are still awaiting a little bit more information. So I would expect to certainly have some information, enough information to have gotten the ball rolling. But some of it has to do with investigating different aspects of the property there and, and what the environmental pieces are on that. And it's important for us to find that out upfront. So that's what we're waiting on. And I, as far as that purchase is concerned, I really can't discuss it. So hopefully you have, don't have any questions on that one. But I did want to make sure that you understood that this is going on weekly, for sure. Just is a bit of a waiting game right now. And I think that is everything.
Thank you. I see the clerk would like to speak.
Thank you, President Stempel. I just wanted to add to the mayor's comments about voting that currently in this, this is an estimate, approximately 45% of the voters in Greenfield have already cast a ballot. As of last Friday, the Clerk's Office had mailed out 5,260 ballots. I was estimating, and I didn't have the numbers that the mayor spoke about at the door, that we've already had about 500 people come and vote in person. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. And whoever is the lucky counselor to read the election warrant motion, needs a sip of water before they do, because they need to read the entire ballot. So just wanted to let you know, lots of fun times.
Thank God it's not me.
And I'll think of it as an honor and not, and not a punishment for whoever I assign that to. Thank you very much. Next, a comment from Counselor Ricketts.
Yes, Mayor, I have two things. You spoke about two new hires, two women, but I missed what their positions were. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I honestly don't recall their titles. They are the two people that are working the door for early voters. So that, what that means is they simply check people in and make sure that they are there for the, for the purpose of voting. And then they do all of the protocols around making sure they're wearing their masks and the contact tracing piece and sort of directing traffic, as you will. We did learn early on this week, during the weeks, not so much on the weekend, or at least I didn't hear about it on the weekend. People who have additional, and Kathy can certainly attest to this, Monday in our office, the phones were ringing off the hook. It seemed like everybody decided to get a birth certificate this past Monday or declare their marriage intentions and a variety of other things. So Kathy was doing double duty, and I have no idea how she handled all of those, but so far, so good. We have created a second, if you will, it's not a line per se, but if you envision City Hall and you know the ramp way up to the side door, which is where everybody can come in and do their vote, and we ask people to line up on that ramp. Off to the right is the, is the shorter stairway. We've turned that into a other business other than voting line. So if people have made their appointments or if they have something to do besides vote, such as pay a tax bill or an excise bill or any of those, they see the Collector Treasurer or go into the Clerk for additional, additional business, that is now being handled in a better way. Rather than have those people wait in the line for voting, which has been very long, and then they get up to the door and they're, they're already frustrated by having to wait so long, and they say, all I wanted to do was, you know, get my birth, get a birth certificate or pay my taxes or something like that. So we've managed to work that out. It's certainly our first go-around with this sort of thing. And like I said before, I think we've handled it very, very well.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my next question would just be nothing about knowing how far in the negotiations you are. But I know that it may be up for a vote in November, and I'm hoping that it will be December if the negotiations are over then. Because I certainly don't want to vote if we don't know the, where the permanent building's going to be. So I hope that it'll still work in everyone's timeline if it's December or closer to when everything makes sense and we all have everything we need.
I certainly do too. I share that times 10. I do have to remind councilors that this is a real estate transaction. It is for a, so that in itself, if you've ever bought a house or bought some other type of property, can sometimes take time and have hang-ups. And a lot of it has to do for, with waiting for information and waiting for lawyers to work on the work that they have to work on. And I, right now, I don't see any reason why we can't have at least a better picture by sometime in November. November's just around the corner. Sometime in November, what, where we're at in that. But do keep in mind that in the interest of Greenfield and really in the interest of the property owner, we are doing some of the environmental assessment a little bit ahead of schedule. And this is to protect Greenfield and to protect the owner as well. So that too requires waiting for people, it's the, you know, the experts that are hired to do that kind of assessment, to fit it into their schedule. Make no mistake, I will certainly update, update President Stempel and others about timing and where we're at on it. So that's all I have to say about that. But be patient with it, because it is, it is a real estate negotiation. It isn't, I'm not going in to buy a car. We're buying a significant piece of property for a significant amount of money, and it all has to work. We don't want to repeat Riddell Street again, so we need to know what's there.
Next, Counselor Bottomley, please.
Thanks, President Stempel and Mayor. My question is regarding your FY '21 operating budget cuts, which were just submitted. And first, I want to acknowledge that cuts are extremely difficult, and I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
In my first look at this, I'm concerned that one department is singled out to take the brunt of the cuts to approximately the tune of 40% of the total. And on the surface, I feel that appears to go against the intentions, or at least the spirit of the original FY '21 budget that the council reviewed and approved. So I was hoping maybe you could provide some background and maybe some information on your decision-making process.
Well, I think as you, as you know, the people who, the departments that, unfortunately, when we have to go cutting budgets, the departments that take the biggest hint are some of the biggest departments with the largest share of the budget. And what I especially want people to know is that where you see cuts, they, especially if it's positions, so if you're looking at that salary and wages line, then I just want you to know that those are people that were not hired, they were in the budget, and, and could have been hired throughout the summer or. They were in the budget and could have been hired throughout the summer or whenever we, you know, started hiring after the budget was approved. But knowing the uncertainty of our final numbers, we asked these departments to hold off, and they did. And that was a good thing because we didn't hire people in June or July and then have to lay them off now. So it is primarily that type of thing that you see in almost every one of those cuts. And I believe you're probably referring to the DPW. We certainly worked very closely with Marlowe, who did... I wouldn't say he was very willing to make the cuts. Nobody would be. He reminds us of what the ramifications of that could be come springtime. But we knew going into this that we might have to do that, and now we're there. And we're absolutely looking forward to you what we feel is the least amount of hurt that we can do and still maintain our budget within the guidelines that we need to maintain it in. So that's really all I can tell you. You know, I just want to reiterate that it really didn't mean that anybody has lost their job. It means that people were simply not... Those positions were not filled.
Thank you.
Counselor Forgie, please.
Mayor, yesterday at the 11th hour, the council received copies of a letter that was sent to you from attorney, I believe it was Peter Lake.
Something like that, yes.
Yeah. And I wondered if you could comment and tell us what you think that is about.
Yes, and so?
That's an easy question, I know.
Yeah. Well, I'm not looking at it right now as such an easy answer because it isn't a terribly easy answer. I did immediately forward it on to our lawyer who is handling the real estate transactions. The question, as you all must have gathered from reading the email, was from the law... It happens to be a local lawyer from North Hampton, and I don't remember the firm at the moment. But he was hired by Billy Walker, who is the owner of the Wells Street property that is also in the mix of potential sites. So I read through the questions. I have not had an opportunity to talk to the lawyer today about it. I just... I got it at the same time you did, so it was very late in the day. And I think that most of them are just a little bit of, he's only getting one side of the story. He's getting Mr. Walker's side of the story. As you'll recall, the history of the original offer that we made to Mr. Walker, he chose not to even respond to my offer. And as it turned out, the offer was for the two buildings, one on Wells Street, one on Main Street, and with a different type of plan involved. And it turns out that we really can't fund a... And we didn't know that at the time. Fund a public service, a public safety complex, which was the plan, but we really are able to build truly only the Phase 1. So on the one hand, it was a blessing, in a way. It led us down a slightly different path because, at the end of the day, the property that we're working with was next in line as the better property. And if we decide, if something goes wrong there, the Wells Street property is certainly still in the mix. And that's really all I can say. The other questions, I think, are better answered by our lawyer, and I have not had an opportunity to talk to him.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Counselor Elmer, please. You have a question for Eric Scott.
Yeah, I think it's really easy. I voted by mail, and I can't find an answer on when those ballots are going to be counted.
So all ballots that are cast in Greenfield, whether it be by mail or in person, are counted on Election Day at the polls.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And next, Counselor Ricketts, please.
Yes, thank you. This is just a follow-up for Counselor Bottomley. I'm glad that he had brought up the salary, the DPW, because I just want to make sure I'm understanding the meeting I listened to recently about the temporary fire station. And I thought the DPW were going to have a big role in doing work for that temporary. So I just wanted to make sure that whoever was left from DPW, that was enough staff to be able to move forward with the temporary or if you would need to, you know, fill those positions after all.
So that's a question for me, Counselor Ricketts.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I didn't even look to see if Marlowe was on, sorry.
Marlowe is not on. So actually, everybody who's at the DPW right now has still got a job. As I said when I answered the question earlier, the positions that you see there are positions that were not filled, meaning nobody had that job to begin with. They were items in the budget. We have to count them, and they were there. We did not fill those positions. So he has assured us that... And I think he would tell you this if he were on tonight. He has assured us that there will be staff to fulfill those roles, and we're very mindful of that. But as I said, also, he just, you know, come spring, when we need a lot of people working on parks and so forth, we're going to be a little bit slower in getting that work done, unless, you know, that's a miracle and we can fill those positions. So I think probably that's really the only answer I have for you now. I think people should be comfortable in the knowledge that they have staff to do the work, and they will play, hopefully, a very big role in the temporary fire station and will result in cost savings for us on that versus hiring the necessary people to do the job. I mean, we already have them hired, and they're on city staff, so let's take advantage of that.
Thank you so much.
Great. Next, Counselor Gilmore, please.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I was having problems earlier. Thank you. I had a question from a constituent who... Somebody in her household tried to participate in early voting, and she told me that the wait was very, very long. I tried to explain to her that, you know, we're trying to de-densify all these public buildings because we need to maintain, you know, proper social distancing. We need to protect the health of our neighbors and, you know, our staff in the office. She was not satisfied with my answer, and I don't want to just tell her, you know, that I can't help her, but this is not an area where I have the authority to make changes. Who can I refer her to to get some answers to her questions?
Yeah, I'll let Kathy handle that because I don't know exactly what she's talking about. So, I mean, there isn't... There's not much we can do about the lines. It's one person in, one person out. But we did, and you might assure her of this if she hadn't had an opportunity to vote, that, as I said today, we added two additional booths. So Kathy can... I didn't second at the end of the day to see how that went because we did it sort of midday when we realized that it was really needed. So I'll let Kathy fill us in on how that might help.
We did change things today. We do have a couple of booths in the hallway to attempt to get people in and out quicker. It seems to have worked. If Sheila, you'd like to have either your constituent or their family member give me a call, I will talk to them, find out what day they came, how it was working that day, you know, see if they want to come back, let them know the differences. If they would like, they can always request a ballot be mailed to them, and then they can either deliver the ballot back to the office, deliver the ballot and drop it in the secure drop box outside of the accessibility ramp door here at City Hall, or they can always come and vote in person. But the short message you can give if they call and they ask for me, I will do my best to get to their call. They may have to leave a message. I may have to call them back, but I will get ahold of them.
Okay. All right, to our letter, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Sealy. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mayor.
Happy to do it.
We did not invite any other city employees to speak, so now we have our public comment. And I'm just going to explain once again, you still have your three minutes to speak. Now we have the luxury of a virtual sign-in book, and that is our chat box. So if you are unfamiliar, you find your chat box. If you look to the bottom of your screen, there's three little dots in between share and the red button that makes you leave the meeting. So if you click on those three dots, you should be able to find your chat box. And if not, then my screen is different than yours. So you're going to sign in by typing your full name and your address in the chat box, and then I'll call you in order to come off mute and to speak. So at this point in time, if there's anyone who wants to speak during public comment, please sign in. You can go ahead and get started with Pamela Goodwin, and thereafter, continue signing in, and I will call you when Pamela is through.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for giving me this chance to talk to you. I believe the mayor and the clerk have answered some of my concerns or questions about the early voting. I had at least about an hour-long wait when I voted on the 17th. And then I went back because I was assigned to hold up a yes on question two. And so when I was there on Monday, Channel 22 was there. I spoke with her quickly as she left, and she said she heard sometimes people were waiting two hours. I don't know if that was on a Sunday because I was with grandchildren kids on Sunday. So I'm... We also, between the officer, I believe it was, I want to say Sergeant Romney or something like that, between myself and he, were having to turn away a lot of people who had birth certificate issues, wanted to pay the bill. They were not happy. And I guess, for the most part, we were like, "Well, try coming at 9:30 or 10:00." And so I'm glad to see, number one, you've added some other places where people can vote, and, two, people maybe will figure out that they can come up there on the short end of the ramp and attend to some business. I guess one of my questions would be, maybe in the future, second in early voting sites or maybe have the front of the building open for other purposes. I'm just wondering whether that would be a suggestion. At the same time, when I was trying to figure out what the hours were for early voting, I called the mayor's office, didn't reach anybody, the community information line didn't get back to me, and finally, the clerk, I think, called to me, or someone did. And I said, "Why couldn't I find it on the website?" And she said, "You click on department, then you click on clerk, and then there's the early voting information." I said, "Oh, I didn't do that. I was just looking on the main website where it was all about absentee ballots and how to register." And I asked if I could speak with an IT person, and I was told they don't take phone calls and whoever... If they got the message, they didn't call me back. But I just thought that that would be, you know, like, the quicker, the faster, as far as getting on a website and trying to assess. I knew the dates, but I did not know the times. And the clerk was very helpful. I wrote them all down because I'm supposed to go back out there and stand with my sign some of the time. The last thing I wanted to mention, and I don't know, this might be a little off-topic, but because we're so close to the Fair and Care Center, I am affiliated with an agency called Dignity Alliance. Today, I called Attorney Rolston, and we had a nice talk because he's very involved. And we at Dignity Alliance are very concerned about the state granting the closure. A lot of backdoor things are going on. The stakeholders and their families have not been told much, and so we're fighting against that. And if anybody wants more information, I don't know, maybe I can figure out, you know, how to get you information on that. I know today Attorney Rolston asked me to go ahead and get ahold of Senator Commerford, and the more the merrier because the senator is very aware of it.
Thank you, Pamela. That time means that your three minutes is up.
Oh, sorry. I was trying to figure out.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to make you aware.
No, that's fine.
You can finish up what you were saying, and then that is the three minutes.
Right. No, that's okay. It's just that it's right next door. We care what's going on over there. I know we do. And there's been numerous articles in the paper about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Pamela. Any other takers for public comment? I'll give you another minute to sign into our virtual sign-in book. I'm not seeing anybody. All right. So tonight, we have no public hearings or second readings. We will move on to our motions, orders, and resolutions. On page 13, please, may I please have Treasurer Disorer read? Oh, I'm sorry. This is not a punishment. This is an honor, right? And if you're unprepared, I can call in somebody else.
Hold on, I have to get my other device to be reading that.
No worries. No worries, Counselor Disorer. I'll call in Counselor Bottomley, please, to read on page 13.
Hopefully, I can make this through without dog.
For our counselors, it's totally fine.
Hold on.
And if we need somebody else... You all are just making excuses for why you can't read this.
He's going to go hide someplace, it looks like.
I can jump in if you need me to.
Well, now that poor Counselor Bottomley has completely moved.
I've got it. This is the warrant for the 2020 state election, and this is to the constables of Greenfield, the city of Greenfield. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth. You are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said city who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at precincts 1 through 9 at the Greenfield High School Gymnasium, 21 Bar Avenue, on Tuesday, the third day of November 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following hours, to cast their votes in the state election for the candidates for the following offices. Electors of president and vice president for these United States, Senator in Congress for this Commonwealth, Representative in Congress, 2nd District, Counselor, 8th District, Senator in General Court, Hampshire, Franklin, and Buster District, Representative in General Court, Franklin District... Court, Franklin District, Register of Probate Franklin County, Franklin Council of Governments, Franklin County. Question 1, law proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve the law summarized below, on which no vote was taken by the Senate or the House of Representatives on or before May 5th, 2020? Summary, this proposed law would require that motor vehicle owners and independent repair facilities be provided with expanded access to mechanical data for vehicle maintenance and repair. Starting with model year 2022, the proposed law would require manufacturers of motor vehicles sold in Massachusetts to equip any such vehicles that use telemetric systems, systems that collect and wirelessly transmit mechanical data to a remote server. With a standardized, open-access data platform, owners of motor vehicles with telematic systems would get access to mechanical data through a mobile device application. With vehicle owner authorization, independent repair facilities, those not affiliated with the manufacturer, and independent dealerships would be able to retrieve mechanical data from and send commands to the vehicle for repair, maintenance, and diagnostic testing. Under the proposed law, manufacturers would not be allowed to require authorization, uh, before owners or repair facilities could access mechanical data stored in a motor vehicle's onboard diagnostic system, except through an authorization process standardized across all makes and models and administered by the entity unaffiliated with the manufacturer. The proposed law would require the Attorney General to prepare a notice for prospective motor vehicle owners and leases, leases explaining telematic systems and the proposed law's requirements concerning access to the vehicle's mechanical data. Under the proposed law, dealers would have to provide prospective owners with, and prospective owners would have to acknowledge receipt of, the notice before buying or leasing a vehicle. Failure to comply with these notice requirements would subject motor vehicle dealers to sanctions by the applicable licensing authority. Motor vehicle owners and independent repair facilities could enforce this law through state consumer protection laws and recover civil penalties of the greater trouble damages or $10,000 per violation. A yes vote would provide motor vehicle owners and independent repair facilities with expanded access to wirelessly transmitted mechanical data related to their vehicle's maintenance and repair. A no vote would make no change in the law governing access to vehicles with wirelessly transmitted mechanical data. Question 2, law proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve of a law summarized below, which no vote was taken by the Senate or the House of Representatives on or before May 5th, 2020? Summary, this proposed law would implement a voting system known as ranked choice voting, in which voters rank one or more candidates by order of preference. Ranked choice voting would be used in primary and general elections for all Massachusetts' statewide offices, state legislative offices, federal congressional offices, and certain other offices beginning in 2022. Ranked choice voting would not be used in elections for President, County Commissioner, or Regional District School Committee Member. Under the law proposed, voters would be counted in a series of rounds. In the first round, if one candidate received more than 50% of first-place votes, that candidate would be declared the winner, and no other rounds would be necessary. If no candidate received more than 50% of the first-place votes, then the candidate or candidates who received the fewest first-place votes would be eliminated, and in the next round, each vote for an eliminated candidate instead be counted towards the next highest-ranked candidate on their voter's ballot. Depending on the number of candidates, additional rounds of counting could occur, with the last-place candidate or candidates in each round being eliminated, and the votes for an eliminated candidate going to the voter's next choice out of remaining candidates. A tie for last place in any round would be broken by comparing the tied candidate's support in earlier rounds. Ultimately, the candidate who was out of the remaining candidates, the preference of a majority of voters, would be declared the winner. Ranked choice voting would be used only in races where a single candidate is to be declared the winner, and not in races where there are more than one person is to be elected. Under the proposed law, if no candidate received more than 50% of first-place votes in the first round, the rounds of ballot counting necessary for ranked choice voting would be conducted in a central tabulation facility. At the facility, voters' rankings would be entered into a computer, which would then be used to calculate the results of each round of the counting process. The proposed law provides that candidates in a statewide or district election would have at least three days to request a recount. The Secretary of State would be required to issue regulations to implement the proposed law and conduct a voter education campaign about the ranked choice voting process. The proposed law would take effect on January 1st, 2022. A yes vote would create a system of ranked choice voting, in which voters would have the option to rank candidates in order of preference, and votes would be counted in rounds, eliminating candidates with the lowest votes until the candidate has received a majority. A no vote would make no change in the law's governing voting and how votes are counted. Question 3, shall the city of Greenfield accept Sections 3 to 7, inclusive of Chapter 44B of the general laws as approved by the legislative body, a summary of which appears below? Summary, Sections 3 to 7 of Chapter 44B of General Laws of Massachusetts, also known as the Community Preservation Act, establishes a dedicated fund source, funding source to enable cities and towns to, 1, acquire, create, and preserve open space, which includes land for park and recreational uses, and the production of public drinking water, wellfields, aquifers, and recharge areas, wetlands, farmland, forests, marshes, scenic areas, wildlife preserves, and other conservation areas. 2, acquire, preserve, and restore historic buildings and sites. And 3, create, preserve, and restore affordable housing. In the city of Greenfield, the funding source for these community preservation purposes will be a surcharge of 1% on the annual property tax levy assessed on real property commencing in fiscal year 2022, July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. If approved, the following will be exempt from the surcharge. 1, property owner and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or low or moderate-income senior housing in Greenfield, defined in Section 2 of said act. 2, for $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property. 3, for $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class 3 commercial property and Class 4 industrial property, as defined in Section 2A of said Chapter 59. A taxpayer receiving a regular property tax abatement or exemption will also receive a prorata reduction in service per charge. A community preservation committee will be established by ordinance to study community preservation resources, possibilities, and needs, and to make annual recommendations to the Greenfield City Council on spending the funds. Upon recommendation of the community preservation committee, at least 10% of the funds for each fiscal year will be spent or reserved for later spending on each of the act's three community preservation purposes. 1, open space, 2, historic resources, and 3, affordable housing. In the city of Greenfield, hear of fail not and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting, given under our hands this 21st day of October, 2020.
Read it all.
Yeah, and then you have to sign the, I mean, you have to read the undersigned.
Oh, okay. City Council President Ashley Stempel, as authorized by vote of the Greenfield City Council by Constable posting, October 22nd, 2020.
Thank you.
President Stempel?
Yep.
Motion needs to be read, please.
Mm-hmm. Like, what did you say?
Motion needs to be read. He read the ballot, but a motion needs to be made.
Yeah, so Counselor, Counselor Bottomley, all you need to read now is page 13.
Uh, there we go. Uh, I move that it be ordered, but the Greenfield City Council hereby approves the attached state election warrant for November 3rd, 2020, and further authorizes the City Council President to sign said warrant on behalf of the City Council. Second.
And who is that second? Counselor?
Oh. Oh.
I thought it was Mayo, but I'll second it.
No, you are, you are correct.
Seconded by Counselor Mayo. Uh, discussion? Uh, we will move to a roll call vote, please, Clerk Scott.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore? Counselor Wheeler?
Your audio, um, is not working, Counselor Wheeler. Can't hear you. He said, I believe he agrees, he says, he's saying yes.
Okay, we'll give him a yes. Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts? President Stempel?
Yes.
Unanimously passed.
Well, there we, I can't believe how soon the election is, it's crazy. Um, all right, so we have next, I, we'll, we'll see if Vice President Wheeler's audio works.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
All right, perfect, yes. All right, so Vice President Wheeler, please, on page 17.
Thank you, President Stempel. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves a payment of prior-year FY20 invoice for Equifax in the amount of $75 to be paid from the FY21 parking human resources budget.
Second.
Thank you, your second. Second from Mayo. Discussion, or, I'm sorry, report from committee.
Uh, unanimous positive recommendation from Ways and Means, uh, this, I think, uh, one of these Equifax invoices had, um, slipped through the cracks before, and we'll hope it doesn't happen again, but it's, uh, it's a small one, and we should pay it.
Um, in particular, I'm here, it does seem to always be Equifax that's slipping between the cracks, was there any questions asked about why we seem to be, uh, getting this consistent error? I don't know if they can send it somewhere more obvious to us, or?
Um, if Director Gilman is on the line, I would refer us to, to her.
I don't think she's here.
Oh, I am, I've been here. I'm trying to start my video, I was trying to say bandwidth. Um, so it is an Equifax, this one is actually from HR, it's in the HR department, and it has to do with unemployment and representation, representing the city at, at hearings.
I see.
Um, and so I, I believe it's more due to COVID than anything.
I see. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions? Seeing none, I will move to a vote, Clerk Scott.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Hirschfeld?
Is muted.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts? President Stempel?
Yep.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Counselor Gwynn, please, on page 21.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointment by the mayor to the Board of Health, Alyssa Valbana, for the unexpired term ending December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Thank you.
Mayo.
I heard second from Forgie. Uh, report from committee, please, Counselor Gwynn.
This did not come before meeting based on timing, uh, so we have no report, and we have no recommendation.
That is right. Um, I happen to know Alyssa personally, and I do believe that she would be great for this role. Um, and I know that that's also why the mayor made that selection. Um, so I'm willing to speak on her behalf, and I'm happy to endorse her for this role. Um, any discussion from counselors? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, please, Clerk Scott.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn? Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan? Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
President Stempel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, we do not have, at least not that I'm aware, presentation of petitions or similar papers tonight. Uh, would any of our subcommittees like to report out? I see Counselor Jarvis, would you like to report out for the fire station building committee?
Yes, I would. Um, I'd like to apologize, I didn't get the, uh, the subcommittee meeting out, uh, I just figured that I would do it here, I've been trying to, within a 24-hour span, keep everybody updated. Um, just quick updates, things that, uh, transpired, Dennis Rocks Ross, the architect, um, should be, um, receiving his finalized contract by the city, and, um, then be on board with a contract, um, but he has been doing, uh, architectural work all along. Um, so, the estimated cost of the, um, of the temporary fire station is $1.9 million. Um, that's on the high side, uh, we, we are airing on the high side of that, uh, doesn't mean that it's gonna come in at that, it'll probably come in under that. As the mayor has stated, the DPW has said that they can do, um, a lot of the utility work for us, um, which will be a savings, uh, nothing comes free, we still have to pay their salaries, but it's cheaper than prevailing wages. Um, so hopefully that'll be, um, some cost savings there. Um, also, we, um, once the scope and conceptual drawings are done, we'll be going out to, um, do it, making our, doing our RFP sometime in December, hopefully, um, with an open of the RP, uh, RFP sometime in January. Uh, other good cost-saving news is ever sources, um, said that they would put in the two poles that we need, and put in the drops that we need at no cost to the city of Greenfield, which is good news, it also saves us some money there. Um, also, cost savings measures is that we're not connecting the buildings, so they do not have to be sprinkled under, under Mass, Mass General Law, they would have to be sprinkled if they were tied, all tied together, because it'd be over 7,500 square feet, so that's gonna be a savings, um, by keeping them separate. And just, if people didn't know, we are gonna be using both parking lots, the upper and lower, for the structures, there'll be a bay on the top parking lot, a bay on the bottom parking lot, along with the administration offices. So that's what I have for an update, real quick. Um, I will have an update tomorrow, coming out for the full building committee, probably, I hope to have it to the counselors by Friday morning.
Thank you very much, Counselor Jarvis. Uh, Counselor Gwynn, please.
I just wanted to, uh, reiterate that, um, we, in appointments and ordinances, are in a bit of a holding pattern, waiting on the mayor's office to fulfill a couple of items that we need to move forward. And secondly, there was a question on the appointments that came up from the last meeting, and in chairs, it was discussed that if anyone has questions concerning a specific individual from any of the appointments that are coming forward, please reach out to the chair, whomever that may be at the time, and them, in coordination with the mayor's office who made the appointment, will try to get that information in a time period specifically about the situation that was brought up. So when we bring it to full council or to subcommittee, that information can already be looked at and have some kind of answer.
That's all.
Great, thank you. And Vice President Wheeler, please.
Very briefly, I just wanted to thank those councillors who hopped on the Ways and Means meeting last night to listen to our discussion about the fire station projects and encourage anyone who didn't to go back to GCTV, to the recording, to listen to it. We tried to run the gamut of the discussion, and we do expect to have a vote either in November, or it's looking like December. And what we discussed at the meeting last night would make a good primer for that vote. That's all.
Thank you. I'm curious if councillor Dolan has an update for the council from the Library Building Committee?
Yes, we haven't had a meeting since you and I exchanged emails about this, President Stempel, but just to fill the rest of the council in, the Library Building Committee plan is going well. We're really working hard on the systems right now in terms of the heat, the HVAC, and electrical, and solar, and that kind of thing. And we also took a vote at our last meeting to pursue lead silver certification, which opens up some extra grant money, if we can get the building to qualify for that, from the state. So everything's going well. We're right on schedule and right on budget.
Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for sharing your reports. We have no unfinished business, no old business. New business, we have some first readings, please. Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam President. City Council First Reading, October 21, 2020. Reduce the FY21 general fund operating budget appropriation of $53,879,442 by the amount of $370,000 for a revised FY21 operating budget total of $53,509,442. Authorize increase fund 1585. Ambulance revolving fund spending limit $40,000 for revised spending limit of $120,000 for the fiscal year 2021. Appropriate $32,423 for GSET fiber and equipment. Appropriate $42,900 from the general stabilization fund for the appraisal of right-of-way's along Wisdom Way.
Thank you. And so next, we have some zoning amendment proposals, and I just want to kind of explain that a little bit. So previously, we had been doing zoning amendment proposals as an initiation process with the council, where we would do it under motions and orders. The council would vote to initiate, and then it would go off in this process. Looking further into, into the charter and also state law regarding zoning amendments, we found that it was unnecessary to do that. However, there's still a component of awareness and transparency for the community, and so we decided, instead of having councillors vote to initiate, was, which is unnecessary, once a, excuse me, once a zoning amendment is submitted to the clerk's office, whether it be from a councillor, whether it be from a petition, or whether it be from a constituent or resident of the city of Greenfield, we will place it here, under new business, so that it can be read into the record and everyone can be made aware of it. The time essentially begins the moment it was submitted to the clerk's office. And so thank you to Tammy for including those dates on here as well. So I will have councillor Dolan, please, read these zoning amendment proposals on page 50, please.
All right, just one second. Let me find that page. So this is page 50, starting with the following zoning amendments.
Correct. Amend chapter 200, zoning, section, and therefore?
Okay, following zoning amendment proposals have been submitted to the Greenfield City Council for consideration. Amend chapter 200, zoning, section 4.2, C19, rural residential by removing the tier-one limitation, and amend section 4.2c, RC District, which is also the rural residential, by adding a new number 21 under subsection C to permit marijuana product manufacturing and marijuana retailer as accessory uses to the use marijuana cultivator pursuant to 7.17. Submitted September 29, 2020 by Jeff Coulson and Emily Seelman. Amendments to chapter 200, zoning, section 4.13, Floodplain District F, submitted October 13, 2020 by the planning board. And finally, amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to low-impact development techniques to include amendments, amendment to section 6.11, driveways and entrances of the zoning ordinance submitted October 13, 2020 by the planning board.
Thank you very much. And so next, we have motions for reconsideration. I don't know if that's someone, I think that's just someone talking on their phone. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Ricketts?
Second.
Moved by Ricketts, seconded by Gwynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed? Any abstentions? All right, this meeting is adjourned at 8:21 p.m. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.